Eduardo.
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Holliburton.
Present.
Councilmember Fun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
Here.
Mayor Oliva.
Here.
All members of the city council are present.
Okay, can we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we don't have any public communication. I don't, do we have any public here? Trying to see. Looks like Bruce Baron. Is but does anybody have any comments from the public of for something that's not on the agenda? Seen Eduardo help me, but seeing no hands raised, I'd like to move on to new business. And that's Kathy Centron of the counseling team will be helping facilitate this meeting. Welcome Kathy. And I'm going to be quiet and turn it right over to you quickly.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you. Good evening to the city council and to all the staff that's present. Tom William, City Manager, just a few introductory comments for me before I hand it over to Kathy, who is our facilitator for the consulting team. So tonight's special session of the city council is to review the 2022-2023 goals. We had sent out a questionnaire to all the council members that follows our strategic initiatives that we've been using as kind of our guiding beacon on these general areas that we will adopt goals to on an annualized basis. And then just remember to keep in mind that when goals are adopted, they don't fit into a neat box of 12 months that sometimes they, they, you know, cross fiscal years and cross multiple years to to get achieved. So as we start here, I just wanted to share with the city council, you know, and remind you of the Millbrae mission statement. It was adopted back in 2014 and the councils reviewed this and it continues to be relevant, obviously, today. And our mission statement is enhancing the quality of life in our shared community, providing great services, encouraging community engagement, fostering economic growth, and embracing cultural diversity in a safe environment. And as we get started, I'd like to just review some of our major accomplishments from last year that are also finishing this year. As you know, we received an $800,000 grant from Congresswoman Spears' office, the federal government, to complete the engineering design and work for our wastewater treatment plant and conversion to recycled water. Finalizing construction of the recreation center with our ribbon cutting scheduled for June 11th of this year coming up in a few months. We've also accelerated sewer, water, and road improvement projects, most significantly on the east side of the transit station along Aviador. It's under construction right now is a is an upgrade to our main. We've also have accelerated water and sewer improvements off of Richmond Drive and Lincoln Circle to where we will eventually repave Lincoln Circle that has a PCI of 12, one of the worst in the city. We've implemented local programs that address the needs of the unhoused, the trends of population. As, as I'll be so bold to say, BARTS had continued to ignore our desire to partner with them. And that was, you know, the great effort. We'll get into a little bit more this evening on on hiring life moves. It's been, they've had great success over the first three months. Also, significant economic development and business attraction and retention, not only just for independent restaurants, but also large now corporations such as Lucid Automotive, that's been up and running now for a few months, 850,000 square feet of Class A biotech campus that's under construction, outdoor supply hardware, and helping our local businesses, a lot of our restaurants, our independent restaurants over this pandemic period with PPP and other grants from from the county. We've upgraded to the opportunity to upgrade Central Park Playground Equipment. That's under construction as well as the Spur Trail. We had the ribbon cutting for the fitness court. We will start the improvements for the skate park here in the next few weeks. We made significant progress, as you know, on the general plan and downtown specific plan. We hope to have that adopted by the city council in October, no later than November of this year. We've also approved major housing projects, the most significant besides TOD2 that's under construction with 500 housing units and TOD1 for 488 housing units, but also the Anton project on the on the hotel site on El Camino. We've also adopted several housing ordinances, including the second dwelling unit ordinance in lieu development impact fee for affordable housing. Next, our tree planting and memorial tree program. This, this program has been amazing. This is something that was started with the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, and this was the Memorial Tree Program along the Spur Trail. We had room for 50 oak trees and they're all sold out. They sold out, I think, within, within four months of the program implementation. Also, just our ongoing COVID-19 action and emergency implementation plans. You know, we're going in the third year of the pandemic. We've been able to work and maneuver through all aspects to keep our staff healthy, the public healthy, and continue to provide service. We continued with our improvements with our community or with our quality of life events such as our cultural festivals, Lunar New Year, new Mid-Autumn Festival, our car show, working with the Lions, our downtown concert series, Beats, Cruise and Vines, and then, of course, our, our Art and Wine Festival. Second to last, we made significant community engagement outreach on a successful California Voter Rights Act mandate on the city, establishing five new city council districts. We just received confirmation from the county register of voters that they have everything that they need from us to move forward with the district elections in November of this year. And then, lastly, ALPR, this has been on on the goals for the city council for several years. ALPR is our Automatic License Plate Reader Program. As you know, we contracted with Flock Communication through the assistance of the Sheriff's Office, and those automatic license plate readers are actually up and running as, as of today. And then, just real quick, before I hand it over to Kathy, these are the six strategic initiatives that the the city council had identified several years ago. Number one is define the Millbrae community of tomorrow and our built environment. Number two is sustainable city and infrastructure investment. Number three is quality of life, neighborhood enhancement, and a strong community. SI number four is city government and organizational success. Number five is fiscal sustainability and economic development. And six is environmental stewardship. And then, just real quick, issues, concerns, trends, and constraints that are kind of common feedback received from the city council on the questionnaire, parking and traffic is the first bullet, aging infrastructure, lack of affordable housing, and the efforts to improve that. Sea level rise and environment. Also, our Heat Island and Landscape programs. Identification of our cake policies. I mean, our zoning code hasn't been updated since 1985. Same with our personal rules and regulations. We still have a lot of work to do there. Our land use policies, design guidelines. You know, we need to adopt those and work through that so that, you know, property owners and developers and anybody who wants to develop in the city or remodel their home has clear direction on where the city is headed in our, in our designing principles. Of course, crime and police presence, always a top priority, and maintaining a high standard and level of service as, as our city government operates. Third to last bullet, there are constraints due to the extraordinary amount of governmental agencies. Again, we've had a lot of conversations about, you know, we've got multiple transit agencies. We have the Water District. We have SFO. You know, this, this city for our size, based on our geographic area, we deal, you know, with, with quite a few governmental agencies that you know, don't, don't report to the city council, but we certainly have to be their partners and deal with it. We're making great improvement there. Also, long-term fiscal planning for our fiscal stability. We make great, great strides there. And then agreements with, this is Millbrae Education School District for our field use maintenance. It's pretty unbalanced. That contract expires next year. I'm forming a negotiating team here with staff to reach out to the school district and start negotiations for that field use agreement. So with that, I'd like to introduce Kathy Citron. She's a senior associate with consulting team to help guide us through tonight's goal setting.
Greetings, everyone. So nice to see you and how lovely to have part of the community with us as well. And I think the council members and the mayor I have met before, and it's nice to see you again. It looks like you all have been very busy since last year and accomplished a great deal. As usual, I like to start all my group meetings with principles of conversation, what I call principles of conversation. You may remember this from last year. It's a tough one because clearly, when I looked at what you had put on your questionnaire in terms of goals you wish for the community in order to live in a better community, a more sustainable community, a wonderful community, they're over 90. That's a lot. So what I'd appreciate you doing this evening, we only have 90 minutes, now less than that. Now we have an hour and 15 minutes to get through as much as we can of this. We may not be able to complete it. But I'd appreciate, I want to hear from you, and I know everyone wants to hear from each other. Try to keep it as short as you can. If I find that people are going on too long, I'm going to ask you to shorten it and we'll set a timer if we need to. The other thing is, is try to keep to the point and speak from your own experience. That if we talk about what we have experienced and what we think, we don't impose on someone else's point of view in the same way. So it's much easier to hear it that way. I'd appreciate it. So let's get going. There is, as you well know, there are strategic initiatives of different types, and you have all sent in what you would like to do. So what we're going to do a little differently this year. I think all of you have received a list of the, the goals that you would like to see. Can we move to the next slide? Great. So this is what you all put in the pot to try to accomplish in the next year. There, this is strategic initiative number one. There are only 17 of them. Only. That's a lot. That's a gigantic amount. Now, in truth, as you look at these, and hopefully you have your hard copy with you because this is very, this is something I want you to keep through the next hour or so, and we're going to try to vote on these. And instead of going through, as we have done in the past with flip charts around the room, trying to accomplish all things, we're going to go by it through this initiative by initiative. And what I'd like to do is have each of you speak to the ones you, the one that you feel most strongly about on this list. And then we'll vote, but be aware that there are things on this list that are, and I'd invite you all to speak out, and Tom particularly, because he deals with this on a, you know, 24/7 basis. There are things you're already working on. And there are things that are are totally impractical. For example, if the airport is won't approve whatever you want to do. So let's talk to the things that are important to you that are also reasonable. And the other thing that keep in mind with all of this is the money for it. Where are you going to get it? Do we, do we have it? Can we do it? And I know this is related to the budget. The second thing is staffing. How much staff do we have? Can this reasonably be done and time? And some things will be, we need to think, and you think this way already, of short-term projects, middle-term projects, and long-term projects. And Tom and I have been talking about this related to the city as a sustainable city. And we heard about this from some of you in your comments. And I, you know, it's something you should be thinking about from my viewpoint as a citizen and that I think you do think about. But I think that issue, which is so dynamic and changing constantly, needs to be considered almost in its own way in a three-hour session that's a sustainability for the city planning session. And you can block out short-term, what do we need to do, long, middle-term, and long-term. And I know some of you are moving on after this year. And it's a nice legacy to think about leaving behind because that's something that's going to go on forever. Okay, so who would like to go first and tell me? How about Ann Schneider? Would you like to tell us your favorite, your biggest goal in this list?
I'm sorry, question. When I look at all of these lovely 17 items, some of them actually are also duplicated in the other areas. And, you know, use of Park Boulevard for special events. Love it. It's a quality of life activity. So wouldn't it make sense to kind of move out the ones that aren't, to me, this was the bigger picture one?
Okay.
And then I can see at least three or four, five, three that combine in.
I think you're absolutely right.
And I mean, I can tell you from, from my, if I was looking at the built environment for the future, long-term. If we look at our east side and from basically a Coen Canal in Burlingame to San Bruno, we, if we have a vision that we haven't yet discussed in the general plan for that, we have to get it in our plan so that we can begin to get the funding for it. And I think there are all of these plans out there that, I'm sorry, I'm talking too long. The County Bike Pedestrian Plan has the Bay Trail running through the wetlands, which ties into the retention ponds, which ties into noise abatement and air pollution and our ability to get our neighbor, our residents, out of those neighborhoods safely. That's all one thing. That's what I would see in this community of tomorrow.
Yeah, I hear you. And, and because we are, and I agree with you that we kind of, as we look, you know, many of you weren't able to get the answers to the questionnaires in until kind of last minute. So we started looking at that late this afternoon to say, these could be combined, and we will do that. But I think I'd like to first hear from you. And I think you're absolutely right. And some of these could be in the other, in the other initiatives. But let's start this way and see if we can accomplish something. And as we go, we will combine.
Because I think I gave you mine. Mine was, let's look at the east side. Let's look at all of Millbrae, and let's find nature-based solutions, which is the new federal or state term for this, nature-based solutions for our problems.
And does everyone understand in nature-based solutions? We're all in this on the same page? Or any questions? Okay, thank you. Great. Who wants to pitch one in this, in this, your favorite in this list?
I'll, I'll take number 16. It's Annie Oliva.
Annie, good. Tell us about it and why is it so great? You're muted, at least for me. I can't hear you.
Oh, now you're. I think with the development that we're doing and with, with kind of what Council, Councilmember Snyder says, with a lot of these that go together with improvements, we can't forget about our infrastructure. We should take advantage of, you know, the sewer and water storms in the streets. Looking for portable water, waters, and how we can, how we could use that somewhere to improve a different part of our city with making it look pretty and being able to water and not feel guilty. And, you know, I like to start from the, the bottom up.
Great. Okay, good. Thank you. Who else? Ruben, you want to go?
Sure. I mean, I, I agree with that last comment. I think that fits better under strategic initiative two, which is where I had it, but regardless, I think completing the general plan and the downtown plan really needs to get done sooner rather than later. I think we've made a lot of progress on that, but, you know, especially with new state housing law that says that you basically have to be very specific in your guidelines to developers, or else you really don't have much of a say as to what gets approved and what gets denied. You know, I think that level of detail so far has been lacking from what we have been presented. And I think if that were to happen in the final draft, we could be facing future situations with litigation and developers that provide projects that are not really up to what our expectations are. So I think that's incredibly important for going forward to the future of Millbrae.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Andres, how about you? You're on mute.
Is it my turn? I didn't quite get that. Sorry. Okay, yeah, thank you. So I actually only gave Eduardo earlier about six, seven major initiatives, so. And those are some of the ones that I felt, you know, that I believe is extremely important for our city. Because I try to, you know, be real brief about it and be real focused on some of the things that I think it's important for us to get done in the upcoming year. And some of them will take more than a year to do. First of all, I think the, I agree that the general plan and the downtown plan will need to get done, but as part of it, you know, we've been talking, we've been spending a lot of time talking about how, you know, the state has taken away a lot of local control on our zoning and how we control density and how development and growth will need to happen, especially in our downtown area. So I thought, you know, one way to combat that issue and really retain local control, get back. And really, I development through in the next year or so is have that local and, and all of them in a specific area within our downtown. So I thought that would be a very important initiative. And some city has already started doing it, and they have already seen some preliminary success. So I think, you know, in order to sort of counteract somebody SB 330, SB 35, those issues. This is retain a good amount of local control as, you know, as we implement this, that would have to forego the opportunity to use the state program. So that I think is important. The Mills Estate Park, this is another one that it's, it's really not a park. It's really a development of a new park because this is, this piece of land that the city owns has been neglected for decades. And I think we have some unique opportunity coming up to deliver a park that everybody would be proud of. So I think, you know, we should get it on our goals in the upcoming year. Distributed dog park is another one that I think, it's more of an idea rather than a goal. And I think, you know, we've been talking about how we need to implement dog parks throughout our, you know, in a certain specific area. But I thought the idea would be better is to have it more distributed among different open space area, or park area that we have. So it's really more of an idea than, than just a goal.
Great.
And also the multilingual access. I think this is something that we've already experienced a certain amount of success as part of our success. And actually, on our previous year's goal as well, to provide that multilingual access to, to continue to encourage most of the engagement among the ethnic community. So I, I, I think that's an important piece. And then the grade separation at Mercer Center, I see this as a huge opportunity for us. And this is something we can certainly work with our neighboring city at Burlingame to do. And, you know, it will help bring the, we, as we, we're already working on getting the Alexandria built. You know, they already started doing it. There are demos already done, and we know that we have about between 35,000 to 4,000 employees coming in. So being able to bring these new daytime residents over to the west side of town would be important. So I think that's something we need to explore.
Great, thank you. Andres, Gina?
Uh, thank you. I agree with my colleagues here as to how some of these meld together. Yeah, I am particularly concerned about the infrastructure and, you know, completing our plans. So you've got number 17 and like three, I think all these things go together into our plans that help us for the future here. I particularly agree with the El Camino Real plan because I think that's a big part of our grade separation. And so one and two seem to go together for me. So I think all these pieces fit together there, and we need to do sooner rather than later because we are, we have a lot of things at risk. All these things are important. It's how we piece them all together. And I do think some of these are very well integrated. So that's it.
Let's do this. And I think we can, am I missed? Have I not called on somebody? And or would the public like to say something that's relevant to this discussion right now? If so, speak up or raise your hand, and I will be glad to call on you. Okay, let's do this. Let's just do the first vote. Unless you want to try to, to couple a couple of these together first. Yeah.
I think one and two kind of naturally go together there.
Does everybody agree with that? Does anyone disagree? Ann?
No, I, I agree, but I think one, two, eight, nine, and 15 are subsets of the general plan. And, and nine and 15 are the same thing. 14 is also part of that. And we didn't really dive into the environment section of the general pond, general pond, general plan. So 11 actually could be part of that, too. A lot of these are elements of the general plan.
Yes, but here's the reality is it may be that this is, we're talking about this year or ongoing. You may not be able to, let's say, creating ECR as a walkable grand boulevard. Yes, it's part of the long-term plan, but we're talking about goals for this year. So I hesitate to move that into everything into that because then we're going to have to spread them apart again and say, we can do that part and that part, but not that part. Do you guys?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Other, I agree with my fellow council members. I will say, and it's tricky because we're still waiting for the insurance investigation of what happened in December. To me, the number one thing we need to do is safety, and we need to have a safe way to get people out of Bayside Manor and Marina Vista, especially when Anton starts building there. Both of those neighborhoods have one access in and out. So that would be my number one.
Okay, all right. So
Because I think we have to do it. I think that's a short-term goal.
Okay.
It may be expensive and hard to do, but it is our top, my top priority.
All right. So I'm going to have you all, I'm going to go around. And this is where we're going to try it in the interest of time. Is I will ask you to, without combining these at this moment, we'll look at that later. We'll look about getting rid of some and combining some as we have in the past. So why don't you start, Ann, and say, I would, on the current list, what number will be your first priority? What will be your second? And what would be your third? I'm wait, wait, let me just finish. So everybody understands. Sorry. So what we're going to do is give three points for number one, your first top choice on this list. Two points on number two, and one point for number three. And then we're going to look at how many points they all get. And if some of them don't have any points, we may decide to let those go. Or we may decide to combine. Now, I remember last year someone asked me, can I vote for the same thing for my number one, number two, and number three? And we did do that. And if you choose to use all of your points in one pot, you can, but you're not, I mean, it's up to you. But then you're, you're losing your opportunity in some others. So, Ann, would you like to start? And if you would identify these by numbers, I have my grandson Archie right here next to me and Eduardo in the office helping us add up all these numbers because it's hard to do without being on the wall, as you know. So what number would be your first priority?
Complicated because if you don't have these, we can't do the work. So in that case, 15, 15, and 16.
15 is your first?
15, 15. And honestly, 16 belongs in another category. 15, 15, eight.
Okay, 15 is your highest.
15 is my second. Eight is my third.
Okay. Eduardo, you've got that. Archie, you've got that. All right. How about Gina? What are yours? Please do it by number. That will help us.
Yeah, sure. Number two is my number one.
Okay.
Number eight is number two. And 16 is number three.
All right, good. All right, who's next? Andres, how about you? You're forced into choices.
Oops, excuse me. Got it. I, I would vote for three, four, and six.
Okay, I'm sorry. Would you repeat that? You, you're kind of coming in and out verbally. What's your first?
Three.
Three?
Three, four and six.
Wait, now you just gave me four. You can only choose three. So three is number one, four is number two.
Three, four and six.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Perfect. All right. Okay, Gina?
Did Gina, it's, I think it's my turn, Kathy.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry, Annie, yes.
So it would be 16, 16, geez, 16, three and eight.
16 is your first, three is your second, and eight is your third. Okay, Ruben, I don't think I did you.
Yeah, a few of these I think fit better in other categories, so I'm going to omit them here, but because I think they're unimportant. I think I'll go eight, 10 and three.
Okay, eight is your first choice and it's your second choice and three is your third choice, correct? Okay. While the gentlemen are adding up scores, let me know you guys when you've got it. Is there anything on this list? We, we didn't vote, all of you did not vote for some things at all. And so the question is, can we put those things aside for this year? So I didn't write it down, so I'm going to wait for Archie and Eduardo to.
While that's happening, I think some of these things actually meld into what we're trying to do here.
Okay.
So, you know, the fees and the density bonus, I think those are all, you know, fit into what we should be establishing to move forward.
Got it.
Yeah, I think maybe the better way to phrase that isn't to say we're not going to do it this year, but we're setting it aside for now for this exercise.
Right, exactly.
My, but my question as to Ruben's comment there is that I think all these things should be, and I, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, like part of the general plan, part of our, you know, established procedures for moving forward. I may be wrong, but these things need to get done. So somebody, let me know.
Yeah, so Kathy, if I can chime in here, I, I think the downtown plan and reimagining El Camino Real, you know, two and eight fit together. One fits not only with, with the general plan, housing element, downtown plan, but also the Millbury Station area specific plan.
Okay, hold on. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is, we're moving numbers around here. So I just want to make sure, are we combining two and eight and something else?
It might be helpful if you could highlight those that we think are related. Is that possible?
So then we would add up, if any of you voted for any of those three?
Yeah.
Would that please you all?
Yeah, I think that, I think they would come together and we're not completely disregarding here.
Yeah.
But my question to staff was, when we're talking density bonuses and fees, don't they go under like, shouldn't we be establishing that right now? I don't, I don't know how that works. Is that part of the general plan?
No, it actually is not, like, number three is not part of the general plan. We have state law, but this would be.
17. Like, three and 17.
That's not part of the general plan either. That would be a separate work, work project.
Yeah, although I would imagine as we just discussed number eight, we're more likely to encounter the issues that we also need to come together on, on number three.
How about if I just reveal to you, and Eduardo, tell me if I'm incorrect, what you voted for? And you may find that is, it's easy to combine, okay? Let's, let's try that first. So the winner of number one on this is number eight, complete general plan and downtown plan. The second is the Millbury Local Density Bonus Program. The third is six, so one, is Historical Architecture and Landscape Guidelines for Historical Neighborhoods. Next, we've got Infrastructure Improvements, Sewer Water Storm and Streets. And.
Hey Kathy, can you hold on for a second?
Yeah.
I want to make sure that I've got this right, so.
I, I think 16 came in third.
Okay.
Let me go over it again. So number eight has seven points. That's the winner so far. Number three has six points. That's second. Number 16 has, no, pardon me, number 15 has five points, Historic Architecture and Landscape Guidelines. The next one is 16 with four points, Infrastructure Improvements, et cetera, number 16. And then we've got downtown plan and reimagine for ECR. And then those that didn't get many or just got one or two points are Mills Estate Park Development, Ordinance and Regulations, and Multilingual Access for all meetings, et cetera. Now clearly, you wouldn't have voted for these if you didn't totally feel the community needs them and it's the right thing to do. But my question now, before we get into this combining, is, I mean, this, as you well know, this strategic initiative is very important, as is the next one, maybe the more important of the whole, all of them. And so can we take some of these off until next year? For example, Use Park Boulevard for Special Events did not get any votes. Can that be removed for next year? Yes? So could we cross through number 12 and put a line through it? The SFO Site 7, make as good regional dog park with trees to buffer noise and air pollution, great idea. But maybe wait until next year and bring it up.
Be honest, it just needs to be mentioned in our general plan, whether it's a dog park or not. But Site 7 and the east side will be in the general plan, so that's okay.
Okay. Okay.
And then I think we can move into the general plan to distribution of dog parks. Those seem to just, you know, be one-liners that need to get into the plan.
Okay, so we're just going to, I'm going to put that in parentheses because it didn't get, it didn't get votes, but I'm going to just put next to that, move to general plan. Is that appropriate? Tom, can you do that?
Yes.
Okay. And would the same thing be true of Use Park Boulevard for Special Events? Or is that totally separate?
Well, if I may, I mean, what we're evolving to is all this is important. What we're trying to get down to is so we can manage it and fund it and prioritize it on work program. So I do think some of this will be in the general plan and some of it is not. For example, Site 7, you know, Councilmember Schneider is, is not, I mean, it's a land use element in the general plan. And I think we have it as, as open space, but not an implementation, right? Because the property owner is SFO. So I don't, you know, think we should go down a path that maybe is unrealistic, that we cannot make Site 7 a dog park, we cannot plant trees there unless we get SFO to agree.
Tom, this is why we're going to have those meetings on what it means to live right next to an airport without taking up the time. But given that SFO has done zero mitigation for decades, we have to know what we want to mitigate in Millbury before we can even ask them to do it. So it's a chicken and an egg.
I think the appropriate plan for that is the Airport Land Use Plan. And every five years, the airport and CCAG are supposed to update that plan. And, and that's on schedule. And so I think that that is where then the city of Millbury would provide its input.
And I'd like to say one thing, and I'll, Gina, I know you are, have your hand raised. And that is, in the interest of time, there is nothing wrong with not grouping these for now. Because once you start going through the path of how are we going to accomplish this? What will it take and what can we bring into it can come stage two? I mean, this is stage one. What do we need on the map this year? Okay, so Gina, what, what would you like to say?
Yeah, might I suggest that in our general plan, we encourage buffer, buffing noise related to airport freeway and all of that? Because we do need to do what we can there and then that would kind of give us leverage with SFO. So we think that would be.
Okay, and Eduardo, can you make it, can you make a note to that effect? While you're, thank you. Okay, so let's just, we, this is important. So let's say, what if we take these five, the first five that you voted for, Complete General Plan and Downtown Plan, Millbury Local Density Bonus Program, Historic Architecture and Landscape Guidelines, and Infrastructure Improvement, Sewer Water Storm and Streets? And treat those as the ones that you're going to concentrate on. You may, when you start breaking them apart, bring something else in. Now with this in mind, I know that there, some of you feel there are things on this initiative that belong in a different initiative. So when we get to the next initiatives, bring that up and we can add it if we need to. Can you live with that? I mean, this is tough because we're trying to do a lot and without being there in person with, without a lot of time. And so I think we may have to have another one of these meetings to finish this. But I wanted like, try to get something on the table that you'll feel that you've accomplished. And, and many of you felt strongly about the things you voted for.
Can, can we just have an explanation of what we, we are, these are great, this is a great process? But infrastructure improvements, that's self-explanatory, general plan and downtown is, I understand, local density bonus program. But Historic Architect and Landscape Guidelines for Historic Neighborhoods, do we, do we have historic architectural? Neighborhood?
Every neighborhood in Millbury can, except one, Millbury Estates, where the old school on the top of the hill was, are old enough to be designated historic in terms of the National Environmental Policy Act. And if we have these historic neighborhoods, when the regional entities that fall under NEPA and SEQA and even California Title 21 have to do additional mitigation to protect these neighborhoods. So it's an opportunity to bring us funding.
But we cannot work on something that has not been designated yet.
We have to, we have to do the paperwork to designate.
Might I, real quick?
Yes.
I don't think my neighborhood is historic, so that would be another one.
You might be the second one. It has to be 50 years old. And that's right, you were built in the late 70s, 80s.
76.
Okay, and Anders?
Yes, yeah, I do believe that, yes, I do. I do believe some of the things on here that could belong to a different strategic initiative. For example, number six could potentially be in SI4. And the four and five could be in SI3, for example.
Okay.
So, you know, it.
The idea is when we get to those initiatives, we may add those if that suits everyone. And I understand your concern and there are, there are some lines. And part of, part of the way this was created was from you all, as you know, or all of the way it was created, filling in the blanks on your forms. So where they go is, you know, varies from person to person. And so if we, if we get to initiative three or four and want to move some of these things in for the vote, I think that's acceptable. But we're dealing what we have on this page based on what the questionnaires you all filled out, okay? So if we take, once again, complete general plan and downtown plan, Millbury Local Density Bonus Program, Historic Architecture and Landscape, Infrastructure Improvements, that's, that's a lot. And the other ones got very, they got one, two, and the, and the downtown plan and reimagine. So other than that, things got either nothing or one and two. Okay? And so, and so Anders, one thing you might do is jot down on your, on your sheets, add this, you know, go to, to Strategic Initiative three or four, wherever you think, for example, the multilingual access should be. And put in, write that down, because when you get to that, you're going to say, this is what I care about and we need to put this in this initiative. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have, I, I talked to Tom earlier about how many he thought we should have for each initiative. And he said, at first he said three, and I kind of looked at him sadly and he said, all right, we can go up to four or five. I'm kidding. But, but, so I think we have the five strong ones here. So let's, let's leave those as they are and take off those that got no votes. It doesn't mean we're not going to do this or come back to it, but it's just where we are. This is how you felt strongly about these five things. So the ones that didn't get any votes? Number one, didn't get any votes. Number five, didn't get any. We're moving that to general. Number six, got one vote. Number seven, grade separation, no votes. Number nine, residential commercial design guidelines, no votes. Number 11, retention ponds, no votes. Number 12, Park Boulevard for Special Events, no votes. 13, SFO Site 7, no votes. 14, Create ECR as a walkable grand boulevard, no votes. And 17, fees for public art and childcare. When you're developing the ones you vote for, some of these will come into that. We're trying to get where we're going to concentrate, what are next steps for these? And you may say, well, let's pull the dog parks into that at the time.
Kathy, if I may, so, so as the council was discussing, you know, combining these, like number 14 that we crossed off, that definitely goes in with, with number two and also number eight, because that's already work in, work in progress. Number nine, the residential commercial design guidelines, I think that, that fits in with number 15. I think as Councilmember Pappin said, you know, maybe she doesn't live in a historic district, but perhaps, you know, coming up with the design guidelines. And as we know with state law, I think Councilmember Oliver had mentioned that we do need to come up with, you know, objective standards. So Millbury is leading the way in the built environment. So, you know, we get that and, and we'll, you know, incorporate all the work in progress.
Okay. Yeah, one sec. Eduardo, I just want to make sure you got that.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yes, ma'am.
Retention ponds are a subset of green infrastructure with this, which is a subset of 16. And for Millbury, retention ponds have to include endangered species because of physical location. And it's my understanding, it also fits in the general plan under, Tom, we've talked about this, about getting a habitat conservation plan or at least the concept into the general plan for that. So it does fit in infrastructure. It's just a nature-based solution for it.
Yeah, yeah, totally understand. And also I may mention before I forget, that SB 9 ordinance is already underway. That, that's also work in progress, so. Just so the council knows.
Good. Any other, any other hands before we move on? You guys have a lot of work to do. Let's move to the next one and see what, what comes up. So the strategic initiative number two for the city infrastructure. Where is my? Too many pieces of paper. Okay. There's a lot on this, as you well know. Now, who would like to pitch one of these? What's your favorite? Who would like to go first? Well, I don't know, raise your hand at once. Anne, how about you?
Annie, okay. Well, expanding the parking authority, improving the city medians. All this, all this could be done with, well, the city medians could be done with the infrastructure if we do something with the water. And I think that the better streets is an ongoing and I think it should remain ongoing goals.
I want you guys to try to limit it because you can all say something good about all of it. So the most important to you.
Most important, I think, is going to be, take that one out, because that's just, that's just blah, blah, blah. Take 32 out. The, I think 18 and 20. I have to stick to two, sorry.
No, no, I just, but I want to, I want to pitch for this. What, you want votes? The, the goal of your explaining this.
Well, expanding the parking authority is is something that, you know, is new to our councils. is something that, you know, is new to our, our councils' technique, and I think that it's, it's working very well. And I think that there might be other areas of the city that we could possibly, uh, do some research on and see if that we can expand it and make it work better. Um, and then I think that the city medians are so important to the aesthetics of our city. It's not just the people that see those, it's everybody going through our city that sees it. And they look awful. Uh, and we, I, bottom line is, we're a product of our environment. So we've been, we, we really, you know, we need to figure out how we can make that look better. We're, we're telling people how to, how to landscape the front of their houses. That's a priority with how, oh, you can't do this, you have to do that, and you know, it's, it has to remain in, in what we think is pretty, and look at where, where our example of.
Good, good. Thank you. A good pitch. That's what I want from you all. I want you, you to pitch this so you sell, you get votes. Okay, Gina, you wanna go?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Uh, twenty-six. Accountability Measures and Schedules for City Projects. Because of all these, we've talked about these things for a long time. And we will budget for them and we just don't see the results. I think the public's and, we and the public are entitled to know what's happening and is there an end game. So that's my number one. I do agree with the mayor on number twenty and, um, twenty-four. Those are my three.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Ruben?
Sure, um, I think I would say twenty-one, but that's pretty much the same as sixteen from the previous slide. Um, so I think I agree with Gina on, uh, twenty-six. Um, I think we need, yeah, better accountability measures, schedules, I don't know if that means, you know, a project manager, contract person or something, make sure that these, um, projects get completed on time. Too, uh, too many deferred projects. Um, just goods, I mean, on one hand, it means that we, uh, build up a reserve, and on the other hand, means that things aren't getting done and we'll need to come up more aggressive at the time, so.
Well, and so my question to you, and to all of you, is, I know it's been a, a tough couple of years for many cities. And I guess you all being close to the airport would have experienced the, not as much of a tax base from that, so how, is there budget money for this? Are you keeping that in mind? Is there?
Um, I think we're, I mean, we're actually trying to get the biggest bang for our buck. I think that's the direction we're heading in.
Makes sense.
Not, not additional.
I can wait here. I mean, with our enterprise funds on, on water and sewer, uh, yes, we're there. The, the, you know, tough part are streets and, um, and storm.
And is that from financial standpoint or regulations or what is that?
No, no, financial standpoint, fiscal, fiscal standpoint. But, but I do think, and, and, and we've talked a lot about this, I mean, the best example, I think, of what the council is getting at is the recreation center, right? And there has been a lot of deferred maintenance um, that the council's approved over the years with our capital improvement program um, that hasn't been done, and, and we do need to accelerate those, we do need to bring those forward and have accountability measures and schedules and projects that, um, you know, instead of studying something, we're actually implementing, you know, the CIP in the direction and getting things built and constructed. I, I think that this is a good one. I, I, from, from my perspective, I think this is a very.
But you don't get to vote.
Nor lobby, so.
And what about Annie?
Yeah, I already did. You mean Anne.
I mean Anne. I, I, you guys are next to each other on my screen. Sorry, Anne.
Okay. Um, because I have a different concept of sustainable city, which is balanced between environment, equity, and economy. To me, the number one thing for Millbrae to do in infrastructure is to move forward as quickly as possible with tertiary water. Taking our sewage treatment plant, getting that water into a potable state, which frees up water for our people, which allows us to do the housing that the state is requiring us to do when we're really close to not having enough water for everyone. So water from an environment, climate change perspective. Now with that said, I think that number twenty-eight and nineteen are the same thing. Uh, partnering, the difference with that, because I'm the one that put partnering with SFPUC, FFPUC is mandated to find new sources of water. SFPUC has a lot of money. We're gonna need thirty to forty million dollars to convert our plant. Why not think about partnering with SFPUC to provide that new water source? And we're already ahead of most of the other cities in planning for it. So my number one is nineteen slash twenty-eight together. Um, my number two is, again, sustainable cities means balancing the three Es. And, um, for the road improvements, which I absolutely agree with the other council members, part of our problem is that the structure underneath the roads is asphalt. And you can't fix it by simply planting new plants. You've gotta actually fix the problem, so we've gotta get back to nature. So to me, I would like every project in the city have a nature-based component to it, or at least consider it, and then argue why it won't be done on that. And that's what nature-based solutions means. Um, and then that also kind of lumps in with number thirty, which I put in. The city tends to think about, well, the city has to put in bioswells. Well, no, our residents and our businesses need to put in bioswells. It's not the city standing alone on public property, it's all of us in this together. If we don't stop the concreting of the hillside, our lower neighborhoods are gonna continue to flood. So, um, I would put as my top in, my top thing is greening our infrastructure, public, private, residential, commercial, you know, and I could, those are mine, so I'm happy to combine them all. It's that concept that we're all in it together and I'm, I'm sorry, we lost two people to a flash flood. We need to respond to that.
Great, thank you. Who has not gone on this one?
Hi. Um, I thi- I think number eighteen is important, although I think parking authority should not be in SI two, should be in SI four.
For one second, Anders, because this may be hard to read for the people at home if they've got, um, if they don't have a hard copy and they've got their Zoom screen open to the a small, small slide and big people, so instead of, we're gonna vote by number, but actually speak what you're talking about in the descriptive. If you don't mind.
Right, number eighteen.
Instead of saying number eighteen, if you would just say, expand the parking authority.
Parking is, yeah, expanding the parking, expanding the parking authority, I think is important, although it, I don't think it is, should be SI two, I think it should be in the strategic number four. Um, and the cool water and the tertiary water, I think, and we've been talking about it for a long time, I think we need to get that done. So those are the two main thing, I think, I can say.
Great. Now do we hear from everyone? I've gotta start writing this down. For some reason, the pictures move around as we speak.
It makes it hard to follow. I agree.
Okay, so are we ready for a vote? This is good. You all are good. You're on it tonight. This is great.
Uh, what are we, what are we voting for?
Me are voting, you're gonna do the same thing. Your first choice, three points. Your second choice, two points. Your third point, one, third choice, one point. And Eduardo and Archie are going to be putting them on the right number. So Gina, if you would give me your first choice and its number.
My first choice is number twenty-six.
Okay, three points there. And your second choice?
Uh, that would be number twenty-one.
And your third choice?
Twenty-four.
Great, thank you, thank you. Ruben, how about you?
Um, first choice would be twenty-six.
And twenty-six is accountability, eh?
Second choice is nineteen.
Recycled water plan.
And third choice is twenty-four.
Great. Thank you, Ruben. That was improved streets, roads and medians. Okay, who's next? How about, uh, Annie?
Okay, I'll go, uh, first choice nineteen, second choice twenty-four, third choice eighteen.
Great, thank you so much. Anne?
Well, I've already played the numbers here. I'm assuming twenty-eight is the same as nineteen. Um, in which case, I'm gonna go thirty-one.
Yeah, wait a minute. Okay.
I, I know, I know, I'm bouncing around. I'm gonna go thirty-one, twenty-nine, nineteen.
Twenty-nine, not twenty-eight. Okay, I see, because you're, okay, got, got it. And nineteen.
We didn't talk about the impact of the unhoused on Millbrae and infrastructure, but there we go.
Okay, uh, who hasn't voted? Anders?
Eighteen, nineteen and twenty-four.
I'm sorry, say that again. Eighteen, nineteen and twenty.
Eighteen, nineteen and twenty-four.
Eighteen is first, right? Okay, I think we've got it. Now let's give these guys a chance to add up these numbers. And we'll see where we are. In the meantime, um, there are a few things here that nobody voted on. Explore stormwater fee strategies. Can we postpone that?
It'll show up again. Oh, no, not that one.
That's number twenty-two. Can we take that off the list for this year?
I- i- it's being discussed at the regional level as a regional measure. So.
All right, let me, let's talk about.
I think we can take it off the list, but I think there are efforts still going on.
Okay, let, I'll, I'll give you the winners. And Eduardo, if this is incorrect, please let me know. Um, the winners are, on this initiative, number nineteen has eight votes, recycled water plan and improvements. Number twenty-six has six votes, accountability measures and schedules for city projects. Number twenty-four, improve streets, roads and medians, especially on the El Camino. And, uh, eighteen, expand parking authority. Now that is one, two, three, four.
Kathy, can you go over those one more time, please?
Of course. I've, I've got on this sheet, and Eduardo, please double check. Uh, eight points for number nineteen, expanded water plan and improvements. Six points for number twenty-six, accountability measures and schedules for city projects. Five points for number twenty-four, improve streets, roads, medians, especially on the El Camino. Next one is eighteen, four points, expand parking authority. So that gives us one, two, three, four. The next one, which has only three points, and you can decide, we can decide later whether to include it or not, but it's nature-based solutions to noise, air and pollution. The other ones have two points or less, or zero. So I think that if, if we can, if you think you can handle it, at least for this discussion, we've got one, two, three, four, five. We may later in the process want to get it down to four or three. But let's leave those on the table. What do you think?
Kathy, can I add another pitch for the one that only got three points? If you are looking at federal and state funding, especially for climate change actions, the money is targeted at things that can claim to be nature-based solutions. And it's also targeted at something that's gonna come up farther in our list of, to priority equity communities, of which we are not one. So when we are out trying to get funding for these projects, we are losing on them. So that's why I've stressed nature-based solutions. It's really, it's really greening infrastructure and we already have a plan for that. We just need to take that plan and expand it out through the entire city. It's not as nebulous as you might think it is. But it'll help us when we're trying to get grant points.
And, and I do think it comes back to one of my original comments, that you should consider doing a strategic plan, plan for sustainable city stuff, just really concentrating on what sustainable city means as in, as the way that you think about, and many people do.
Well, it's not the way, it's the way it's defined, but I appreciate that, but I think only you and I had that discussion.
Right, right. And so I, you might think, all of you, about having a, a strategic planning session like this, only concentrating on the what you're talking about now, the sustainability aspects that will change and grow with the changes in our weather and our planet, et cetera, et cetera, and everything, you know, viruses and who knows what else. So I think, but it's breaking it down into what can we do now? What can we do middle term and what can we do long term? So that you have a forward-looking, long-term plan for that. Just a thought. Okay, so this is good. We can, um, we have already taken out some things. We know that, uh, there are some that are really, are easily, um, combinable. Anything else that just hits you that we, before we go on with the next one?
Um, I think it would be helpful to us in the future, if you put the number in parentheses after each one, how many votes it got, if we have to come back to them.
Okay, sure.
So.
And maybe, Ruben, you could do that now with slide one and slide two while we go on to slide three, because I think, no, I'm sorry, not Ruben. You can't do that. You're supposed to be engaged in this. Eduardo, yikes. Eduardo, can you go back to, uh, slide one and two? Do you have access to redo those? You must. I mean, can you?
I don't, I don't wanna hold everything up.
No, that's okay, but I think it's a great idea. And you certainly will get it, it may just not be today. And I think it, because you guys are gonna have to go through next stages. Yes?
Kathy, if I, if I may, just, just for the council's, um, knowledge, number twenty-three is already a work in progress, um, as you know, so.
Yeah, good. All right, so we should move to the third initiative. Quality of life, neighborhood enhancement and strong community. These are all important, hard to choose. So who would like to speak to their favorites? Try to, try to limit it. And so, this is a sales job, you all. You want people to vote for your favorites. And so I'd like to hear.
I'll go, uh, growing the Life Moves Program is something that, uh, we have had great success on. And I think that, uh, we were hesitant to see where it would go, what it would do, and looking at statistics, uh, I think that we should grow that program and, um, put ourselves on the map for it. Because it's, it's not only helping this, the residents of Millbrae, it's helping the businesses of Millbrae, and it's helping the people that we're helping get off the street.
Right.
Uh, I also think that, uh, downtown police foot patrols, community policing and, uh, be implemented, the implement the neighborhood watch, that, that's all goes part, that, all of that goes part to it. And, um, I think that anything that would be public safety, growing Life Moves Program is the number one issue, I believe, of, of problems with public safety in Millbrae. Uh, they can all, they can all go under that one, that one little
Yeah.
Um, thirty-four, whatever you wanna call it.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you. Who's next? Who would like to go? Anders, how about you?
Yeah, I think, um, the, the uh, park improvement also there is important, you know, you've got Bay Simon and Marina, the State of Mills State Park, so all those still needs to, I think we've been on discussions on this for a long time now, so I think that needs to get done, now that we've got some new, um, projects coming and with the impact fee, we have an opportunity to get these things done in an upcoming year. Um, and the, um, yeah, thirty-four and thirty-seven do go together, and I do believe that's important as well, so.
And Howard, and forgive my ignorance, how are thirty-four and thirty-seven, um, tied together? I guess I don't know about the Real Life Moves Program.
The Real Life Moves Program is the, um, the volunteers that we hire, the nonprofit organization that we partner with to help the unhoused personnel.
I see.
Uh, and that obviously is for topics, we're trying to improve, uh, with the downtown police, oh, officers that we get, um, so.
Great, thank you.
The new part is, but the new thing about, you know, number thirty-seven is the, the neighborhood watch.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Just, just for point of clarification, the Life Moves Program is, is a paid-for, budgeted program, not, not voluntary. Just for the record.
Great, thank you.
Again, we have a three hundred. Yeah, we have a three hundred thousand dollar budget for that program.
Great. Okay, Ruben, you're up.
I think you, I think all good points. Uh, I think for me, the top, uh, priority here would be number thirty six, the park improvement project. Um, I think these are the three probably most neglected parks that we've had, Bayside Manor Marina Vista and Mills Estate. Um, I believe there are playground improvement scheduled for Bayside Manor and Marina Vista. So it would be great to see it, those get completed this year. Mills Estate, there was a, um. A grant application that we applied for a couple of years ago, uh, for a pretty significant, um, improvement project there. We did not receive the grant, um, but perhaps we can kind of go back to the drawing board and kind of make a more. Um, sort of a scaled down approach to what was, uh, originally presented. Um, that potentially we could, uh, fund ourselves or maybe try to work with some outside partners to fund. That's my top priority. Like, we, I think it's very important. I think if we were to grow it, I don't know, we necessarily should be putting more funding into it, but perhaps. Uh, at this point, showing how successful this may be, Bart or some of the other agencies may be interested in contributing to it. But I think we can't really, you know, go at that alone.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Anne, how about you?
Um, I agree that the life moves program has been very successful, but I also agree with Ruben. I'd even be stronger. I, I know we have to spend the money, but I resent that we're having to spend the money for a problem that shouldn't be ours. Uh, but a- again. Quality of life, we are heading into climate change. And most of our neighborhoods do not have the tree coverage that will keep them cooler in heat waves. So, um, I broke these out into smaller things. I'm trying to see where I could, could combine them. Um, if you have disaster recovery teams as part of neighborhood watch, a subset of that is looking at what can make us more resilient. Climate resiliency work on that. So it, since those are my two, if I could figure out some way to combine those. Um, the other thing that cities, especially, um. I'll use West Oakland as an example. They use planting trees as a neighborhood engagement activity. It strengthens a neighborhood. It brings the community together. People who've never spoken to each other. Um, come out and talk to each other because they're improving their own neighborhoods, but it's also a climate resiliency work. So maybe, can I combine those to say, we try to find a climate resiliency project in every neighborhood? On that, and, and that should also bring the, the.
What are those two numbers?
Uh, forty four and forty one.
How do you all feel about that?
And I might be the only one voting on it. The other one that there is funding becoming to become available, becoming to become avail. Becoming available for school buses. The return of the school bus is actually a national and local discussion. And if there's a way we could work with our school bus system, we could drastically reduce the cars on roads like mine. Like Poplar, like Ashton, like Helen, and, um, get electric school buses, reduce our carbon footprint and help with traffic calming. So I'd move forty two and forty three together.
So you would like to move forty one and forty?
Yeah, if we're trying to move them together, um. School buses are a subset of traffic calming.
But I get it. I think that's going to be the next stage after we get.
Okay.
After we go through all these, we need to go back and like tighten up.
Okay, well then the other one is the, the number one thing I hear from almost every resident is people drive too darn fast. So traffic calming.
Traffic calming.
Which is forty three.
Right. Traffic calming. What a great, what a great idea. I love it. I've never heard that expression. It's wonderful. Okay, um, Annie?
Yes, I did it already.
You did. Who am I missing?
Me. Gina, I think.
Gina, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting a little confused here as to the connecting, um, you know, this. Going through like an entire list here. It would be helpful if you had something at the end, you know. Combined with, if they seem to match. So for instance, and I'm not picking at this point, but you've got neighborhood watch in forty four and you also have it in thirty seven.
Right.
So, you know.
Here's the problem, and I think that next year, when we all hopefully be included. Um, set out on this path of making these decisions, we will have from you all. Uh, maybe the week before. The, what you want in the questionnaires that will give time to the staff to kind of put it together and put similar things next to each other. So that we can combine things.
Well, we can work on that. I mean, in years past, we got direction to just put exactly how it was entered.
Right.
Um, so people didn't forget, so.
And people word things differently.
We're making notes, obviously, of those that are combined that, you know, improve public safety goes with number thirty seven and number thirty four. You know, so, so the others, so we, we are keeping.
And what do you think about this, Tom? If you and Eduardo, and I'm glad to help, but you guys probably can do it. Get back out to this group after this evening, the, the number of votes next to each one. And maybe, um, based on what was discussed, combinations. Probable combinations, is that a reasonable request or?
It is, and if I may be so bold, because in ten minutes, our normal city council meeting starts. So if we could get through this and then continue.
Exactly.
Then we can, we can actually bring that back to the next minute. That's, you know, depends on the pleasure of the council, but just as a suggestion.
All right, so I'm going to go with thirty six, thirty seven, which I'm thirty six, improve, uh.
Wait, 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 wait. Are you, you're, you're giving us your vote, correct?
No, I mean, I didn't get to pick mine to begin.
Yeah, no, she's picking her, yeah.
Okay, good. All right.
Thirty six, then, um, which is the park improvement, uh, thirty seven. Uh, neighborhood watch, downtown foot patrols, those I think are important to our quality of life. And also I'll throw in there forty nine, support all communities in need.
All right. Now, so I need to go back and get your votes, because some of you have said numbers and pitched it, but I didn't know exactly it was your vote. So give me your top three, Ruben, the numbers, please, for number one, two and three.
Thirty six. Thirty seven. Thirty four.
Okay, um, Annie, first, first three, first, second and third, please.
Uh, thirty four, thirty six, thirty seven.
Anders?
Thirty seven, thirty six, thirty four.
Anne?
Forty three, forty one, forty one.
Can, can we, did, are you getting this Kathy? Or we can slow it up there a little bit? Okay.
And, and Annie?
Gina?
I already did it. Don't confuse me with Gina Pappen, please.
I'm gonna go. Forty nine. Forty nine is my second and, uh, thirty seven.
Right. Gina, you didn't sell forty nine. We don't know what it means.
Well, to me, it actually plays into thirty four and the unhappened thirty eight, which is life moves and just expands on those. Forty nine, supporting all communities in need, food insecurity, housing insecurity. So I think forty nine, forty eight and thirty four kind of all play together.
Okay, I've got some totals here. Uh, Eduardo, check it out and see if I'm correct. And we have two tied for the winning, uh, projects or SI three. Uh, they are number thirty six, park improvement projects and number thirty seven, downtown police. On foot patrols, community policing and implementation of neighborhood watch. They each got seven. Then we have tied for the next two.
And put, put a seven after each one then.
Yeah. And, and I think Eduardo can do this later and give it back to you if it's, if you can't do it now. Eduardo, can you add a seven after thirty seven and thirty six?
He did.
Yeah, I did. I did.
Okay. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Okay, so the next two, uh, thirty four gets five points, Grow Life Moves program. And forty nine gets five points, support all communities in need, food insecurity, housing insecurity. Now, if you want to add two more, but we're getting it, we, now all of a sudden, if we, if we add the next two. They are tied and then we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, which is a lot. You guys have already, like, you're embarking on a lot of stuff here. So shall we hold it at thirty four, thirty six, thirty seven and forty nine?
Yes.
I think so. I mean, it's, you want to do it all, but it's, we have to be reasonable here. Does that make sense? Okay. So we can basically, uh, strike out and postpone. The striking out doesn't mean you're never going to deal with it again or talk about it again. And once it did not have votes, tree ordinance, forty, thirty nine, community events at New Recreation Center. Thirty eight, summer products program. Thirty five, plan and calendar events. And, and forty two, which may become part of forty three, work with MSD to bring back buses. And so urban forest program. Uh, include disaster recovery, neighborhood watch, et cetera. We're not going to include conduct neighborhood and citywide disaster preparedness day, not going to include. Support local businesses, prevent crimes, no, not now. Improve public safety, not now. And unhoused, not now. Although you have those obviously in other ways, support communities with food insecurity and housing insecurity. So you've got it down now to, um, five in the first, five in the second and four in the third initiative. Um, you've accomplished a great deal. And so my goal for you all would be to have another hour and a half to finish this and get it to where you can start dealing with it. And so tell me and Eduardo and Tom. What you'd like to do with what we have done. Put the number next to each one of them, take out what we've taken out that didn't get votes. And get that email to you sooner rather than later. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else from you all at this point? I don't, I think going on to the next one is we won't have time to do it. So we're almost at our seven o'clock.
Since we have three left, you think before you bring it to us or bring it back, you might see which ones are actually. Slightly different versions of them themselves.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, if the council agrees, we can actually combine these, um. You know, and I think that does make a lot of sense. Um, again, we, we wanted to put actually each council members, you know, desires of goals, but we can certainly combine them now. If that's the direction of the council as like goals and, and do that, I think that would be. Very useful.
I agree.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll help. It makes it easier to make decisions clearly. And, and so, Tom, I think you have at your last slide and everybody has it next steps with this. Other than what we just talked about, the combination. Could staff also note, please, what pro, what some of these things were already work in progress? That would be helpful to us.
Yeah, it's a great, great point.
Yes.
Yeah.
And also perhaps long term and short term projects. You know, that you can think about general timelines, like this is a three year, this is a six month, might be helpful to you all.
Yeah.
And even since, since we haven't done the next three, um, maybe Eduardo, you and Tom can work on. Though that kind of thing also for that short term, you know. Three year, long term, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so, uh, Mayor, and if the council agrees, we can continue this and do the, the, the last three. Goals under, under the last few strategic initiatives on the, uh, on the twenty sixth at five thirty. I think we get through it quicker, actually.
Yeah.
Um, as we combine and, and do what's a work in progress, what we're already working on.
And, and might I suggest you have members of the public here if they'd like to submit comments? That would be helpful. Because they, they've spent the time to listen to this.
And we have a few minutes right now with some, if anyone would like to say something.
I think it might be easier for them to, I'll come, like, submit written comments on what we've gone through and what we still have to go through.
Good.
If that's, if my colleagues agree.
Ri, yeah, because it, for the, for the sake of time, Gina, I think of, uh, we should wait till the twenty sixth to listen to the public, just because I want to give everybody enough time. It's three minutes to seven.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and I'm just suggesting that they submit their comments in advance.
Yeah.
So that we might look at them too. Thank you.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
City manager, when you send that out, can you preface that these are the goals for the fiscal year? Which fiscal year? And what Kathy said too, that we know that some of these are going to take longer. Um, but I'm not sure everybody understands that you. How, how long some of these may actually take to fruition. For example, if we're doing something on El Camino Real, um. We know that C CAG has put a request in for funding for our three point one miles of El Camino Real, but that's for a separated bike lane. What's the practical, I hate to say that because I want to dream. And I think our El Camino is horribly ugly and I want to see plants all over the place, but, um. The, the funding for it and just how long it would take to get Caltrain on board as one example.
Yeah.
I, I would also say that I wanted to plant trees like crazy, but the scientists are saving. The best thing we can do to reduce our energy consumption. When there's power safety shut offs is to paint our roofs white, because that'll happen immediately, reduce electric demand versus trees. That'll take longer to grow to reduce electricity demand, but we have to start thinking climate resiliency in everything.
Thank you, Rick. Great. Well, I know it's time for you all to go through a, a different kind of agenda. So unless you need me for anything else, I will bid you adieu and hopefully see you in a couple of weeks to finish this up. Thank you all. What a great group.
Kathy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have to log off and log back on?
We do not. Uh, this is the same, uh, meeting link. Uh, however, if it's okay with you, Mayor, maybe, uh, we can give MCTV about a minute so they can reset. And Matt, um, you let me know, uh, let us know.